All right. All right, here we go. Nice to see everybody. Well, guess what? It is the third Monday of the month, and we are lucky enough to gather together for the regular business meeting of the Kalamazoo City Commission for Monday, April 17. And to get this meeting kicked off here, Clerk Bowman is going to call the roll.
Commissioner Decker, Commissioner Hess.
Present.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Present.
Commissioner Juarez.
Present.
Commissioner Pradel.
Present.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. Thank you, Clerk Bowman. May I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Decker?
So moved.
Support.
Made by Vice Mayor Cooney, supported by Commissioner Pradel. All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay? All right. That is approved. So we are honored this evening to have Pastor Kenny Bryan here from the Kalamazoo Community Church to help us get started on the right foot this evening. I appreciate that very much. And he will be coming forward for the invocation. They will please stand for that, remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Shall we pray? Father God, we thank you for this wonderful city called Kalamazoo and the blessings that are ours because we get the privilege of living here. And you've entrusted us with this great resource. Father, might we manage it wisely? Father, we acknowledge that government is not man's idea, it is your idea. And you desire that we manage it well. So Father, I pray for these that are before me tonight. Father, would you give them great wisdom and skill? Give them boldness of conviction? And Father, give them hearts of compassion for the people that they serve. We ask that this meeting would be right in your eyes, in the wonderful matelus name of our God and our Savior. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Pastor Bryan. I appreciate that. We have a couple proclamations this evening. The first one is we're going to be recognizing our city team here and Arbor Day. And I believe Commissioner Pradel will be reading that. I will be going down with the proclamation. So take it away, Commissioner Pradel.
Sure. We are excited to read the official proclamation about the official Tree City USA. And whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for planting of trees; and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with planting more than a million trees in Nebraska; and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and world; and whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife; and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products; and whereas trees in our city increase our property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community; and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, now therefore I, Commissioner Chris Pradel, on behalf of Mayor David Anderson, City of Kalamazoo, do hereby proclaim April 28, 2023, as Arbor Day in the City of Kalamazoo. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support our efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote well-being of this and future generations.
Tree Committee is honored to receive this proclamation tonight. Members of the Tree Committee that we have here, we have Brian LaBelle, Forestry Supervisor, City of Kalamazoo; Gail Walter, a representative from the Environmental Concern Committee; Patrick McBeary, Director of Parks and Recreation Department; and myself, Anthony Ledd, Public Works Division Manager for Public Services Department. Thank you very much.
Okay, so we have another proclamation here honoring Workers Memorial Day, April 28, 2023. Whereas every year on April the 28th, communities and work sites around the world honor friends, family members, and colleagues who have been killed or injured on the job; and whereas in 2021, the Federal Bureau of Labor Statistics estimated that 5,190 workers were killed by traumatic injuries on the job. On average, nearly 100 workers died every week at roughly 14 workplaces. And whereas in 2021, 1,401 workers were lost through fatal workplace accidents in Michigan; and where it is appropriate to honor the memory of the courageous and dedicated members of Michigan's labor force who have been injured or disabled or have died as a result of workplace accidents; and whereas we remember those who have died in workplace catastrophes, suffered occupational-related diseases, or have been injured due to dangerous conditions; and whereas recognition of the integrity of Michigan's workforce and its achievements on behalf of the economic growth of our state is necessary; and whereas the City of Kalamazoo wishes to pay tribute to the workers who have died or been injured or disabled in workplace accidents, we honor the contributions of Michigan's workforce and call for increased workplace safety. And whereas the City of Kalamazoo renews our efforts to seek stronger workplace safety and health protections, better standards in enforcement, and fair and just compensation, and by rededicating ourselves to improving safety and health in every city workplace, now therefore, on behalf of the 54th City Commission, Mayor David F. Anderson, we do hereby proclaim April 28, 2023, as Workers Memorial Day in the City of Kalamazoo.
All right. My name's, hello. My name's Isaiah Minor, and I'm not very used to speaking on microphones, so you'll have to forgive me. I'm with the Michigan AFL-CIO, and I just wanted to say thank you to Mary Anderson, Vice Mayor Cooney, and everybody else seated up here, as well as all of the residents of Kalamazoo for putting forth this proclamation. And I look forward to helping build a stronger labor presence in southwest Michigan.
Thank you, team. So next step here, Commissioners, is to adopt the agenda. Are there any changes that anyone on the Commission would like to see? Move any items from our consent agenda, which is G, to our regular agenda?
No.
All right, C, none. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to move any item from our consent agenda to our regular agenda? All right, see no one? No changes there? Any communications, Manager Wismann?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. All right, now is the opportunity for public comments for our business meeting this evening. And I want to remind people that we will start with public comments from people here in the chamber. You'll have three minutes. Please give us your name and whether you live in the city. And if you desire to call in for public comments, you can do that. I would suggest to call now. The number is 888-382-9556. And we'll, after people who are here in the chambers have spoken, then we'll check to see whether anyone's called in. Yes?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I will apologize in advance for this very short notice. As you guys know, we have been working over three years on building the homes on Ransom Street. We have not completed the contracts for the federal and the state, but with our striker dollars and with the county millage fund dollars, we are able to have our first groundbreaking for two of the homes this Saturday at 11:00. So that's why I'm apologizing ahead of time for this very short notice and hope that you will be able to attend. City manager, I have no excuse. I'm just going to ask you to attend, and if you can't, we will understand. And then when the second set starts, maybe we could get an earlier start. So thank you for all of your support. As you know, that the City Commission, with the help of city staff, assisted us in purchasing the property in 2019. So it's a long road. We have had to jump through a very lot of hoops over environmentals, and we are almost there, but we at least can start with the first two. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Next, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Commissioners, for giving me this opportunity to come up. For those of you who don't know who I am, my name is Shannon Mondou. I am a local chef and a writer, and also the driving force behind the Canadiana Fest, which if you haven't heard about it already, you will soon. It's taking place October 7th at Arcadia Creek Festival Site. And this event will be including art, music, culture, and food, and of course, a beer tent, led by myself and the American Culinary Federation, with benefits going to the South Michigan Food Bank. I'm coming to you tonight because I want to share with you this event, make sure it's on your radar, and let you know that as a single individual in your community, I'm working hard to bring something that's outside the box to the City of Kalamazoo. The event has already garnered attention regionally, locally, and tomorrow I will be on CBC Radio in Canada, speaking to people from my hometown, where I am hoping to develop something very unique with them. And in my ask, you'll hear about that. So what are we doing with the Canadiana Fest? Well, we have four iconic music groups coming to perform. That includes Sea Shanties, it includes Gordon Lightfoot Tribute Band, Rush, if you haven't heard of them before, you probably have never listened to rock and roll, but anyhow, it's a tribute band as well. And then we also have one of our local artists, Andrew Rathbun, who is a Juno Award-nominated jazz artist who is from Toronto, Canada, and he's also a professor here at WMU. So we're sourcing a lot of local to bring Canada here. And this event came because of my personal experience through the pandemic and having missed my country, wanted to share all of the great things about Canada here in Kalamazoo. So what am I here to ask for? Well, even though I'm working extremely hard, I still need support. I need financial support. And what I would like you to have under discussion are three things. First of all, I'd like to see a sister-city relationship developed with the City of Windsor. I've already started working and laying some groundwork on that. Secondly, I would like to know how we can get public media involved to support the event. And finally, and respectfully, I would ask if there is any financial help available from the City of Kalamazoo to help fledgling creative outside-the-box events like the Canadiana Fest take root. It's not just myself, it's also people like Jennifer Prankert, who are doing the Sounds of the Zoo on our own without support from corporate or any other kind of backup. So we'd like you to consider these options and bring them to the table in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So my name's Ray Sweeney. I live in the City of Kalamazoo, in particular on the west side of the city. And I was witness to something that I wanted to report to you. On Saturday night, being a very warm night, the windows were all open. I'm a light sleeper, and at some point around 4 o'clock in the morning, bang, 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 bang! That you've all heard about in the media. There was a killing on the west side of the city. What you did not hear is what I heard. Almost in the same cadence of that firing was the first siren. Some law enforcement agent was there, close, and was responding without even the call to 911. Later on, other sirens joined them. But I am so thankful for that person and for law enforcement in general, for their putting their lives at risk, walking into a, or driving into a situation where gunfire was heard. They would have soon recognized there was a body on the ground, and there they are in the dark trying to figure things out. So this is an unfortunate occurrence, but again, we should be so grateful for the work of the law enforcement. In particular also, I recognize, I come here usually with a hat on as a member of Isaac Housing, Affordable Housing Task Force, but we also have a Gun Violence Task Force in Isaac. And one of the things I wanted to acknowledge was the passage of some safe gun and red flag laws that are so important. Now, we don't know the details of this killing on the west side. Gun violence is complicated, but let's keep at this and make it happen. Let's reduce it to a point where people can live safely and feel secure. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Did the other people?
No, anyway, now's the time. So if you would like to take advantage of public comments?
Thank you.
Yes.
Hi, Mayor and City Commission. My name's David Elias. I've lived in Kalamazoo for the last four-plus years. I spent the previous 28 years in Grand Rapids. And one of the things I had spoken to Mayor Anderson about a couple weeks ago was in Grand Rapids, something I think would go over well here, is they have these bikes called Lime. I don't know if any of you have seen them up here, I mean, in the Grand Rapids area. It's a great way to promote the area. People use their debit cards or whatever, the app, they can bounce around everywhere, and it's good to promote the city and attraction. So I think that's something you guys might want to look into. I think, I don't know if there's any other competition, but that's, the City of Grand Rapids, I'm certain, could give you guys a little background about that and how that works. Secondly, I have my house, I'm supposed to close two weeks from today. And one of the things I've noticed, I live in the Edison neighborhood, and there are tons of broken-down cars, neighbors busted windows, and I don't know if that's more in the City Commission, or that whether to make sure laws on the books are enforced. I've seen abandoned ski-does behind cars. It brings down my property values and others, and it's a disgrace. I'm not dumping on anybody here, but if those are from the City Commission, those need to be enforced. It could be public safety, I truly don't know, but I just wanted to make you guys aware of that. The other thing is, that still bothers me, is when Kalamazoo went after somebody from the Chicago School District to take over here, I don't even know why they looked in that direction. Everything about the Chicago School District is pathetic. The scores, the standards have been lowered, dumbed down, as of a couple years ago. Well, I don't even want to waste time about that. The bottom line is, the Kalamazoo Promise means absolutely nothing to anybody here if the standards have been lowered. If, from what I understood, Ms., I can't even pronounce her last name, Rita, I remember was her first name. I was told that the schools were told, in order to get the kids to the next grade or to graduate, nothing about the finals answering how many right. All they had to do was finish two-thirds, finish two-thirds of the finals. And that's horrific. The standards, the Kalamazoo Promise is a great idea, but if the lower, if the standards have been dumbed down, it's not going to do any of the students any good, none. If they're picking, scraping the bottom of the barrel for people, I'm not, I'm just saying, go to a school district that's popu, I mean, that has high standards. Chicago is one of the absolute worst examples where to find somebody.
I beg you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, yes. Is there anyone else in the chambers who would like to take advantage of this opportunity for public comment this evening? See no one? Deputy City Manager Chamberlain, has anybody called in with a public comment?
We'll open the lines here. Hi, Your Honor, I'm with the Kalamazoo City Commission. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Tina. I live on Lake Street. I'm calling about my last little green space. You've staked the property. You've, you've tried to destroy our little woods. Winter Family, I need you to help me fight this battle. I've been fighting this battle for six years now. The City Commission will not give me any answers to any of my questions. They won't do anything about the flooding. I am the lunch lady at Winter Elementary. I've fed many of your children. You just put a roof, helped me put a roof on my house not that long ago. I need your help to fight this city on trying to destroy our last little green space between Lake to Stockbridge that the City Commission has been trying to destroy to build in. There's over 100 trees. There's oak trees, there's deer, there's coy, sometimes we see a coyote, but there's foxes, there's owls, there's lots of little animals that live there. It's their last home, Winter Neighborhood. I need your help. My city will not give me my answers to my question. They will not do anything with the flooding. We flood two to three times a year. So please, I'm at Winter, give me a call. 337-0780. It's extension five. Call me anytime you want. Please, help me out because the city won't answer my questions. I've tried for six years now. We flood all the time. The more they take away green spaces, the more I flood, the more I have to keep replacing furnaces, I have to keep replacing water heaters. I have to work two jobs, but yet they're still trying to destroy this green space. When they have the old DHS building that the City of Kalamazoo says they own, that they could build there and leave this last, last little piece of green space. It's the only one left in my neighborhood. My animals have nowhere else to live. And this little green space helps us with flooding, when the only thing the city does for us is put up road closed signs. We've already flooded once this year. How many times are we going to flood? This is Earth Month. Save the earth, climate change. Stop taking away green spaces, City Commission. Stop taking away wildlife's last home. They have nowhere else to go. Stop destroying Kalamazoo. When you can build at a vacant lot where there's a building sitting there rotting away, at the DHS building, and you could leave our last green space. We need to save green spaces. We are a poor neighborhood. I work hard, and I shouldn't have to work two jobs to replace things that the city helps, keeps helping destroy. So Winter Family, I-
That was the last call, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Deputy City Manager Chamberlain. I appreciate everyone who took the time and made the effort to either come here or call in with public comments this evening. Next is our consent agenda. Manager Wismann?
The following items are presented for approval this evening. First is the approval of a contract with the Peerless Midwest Company to perform well rehabilitation and associated maintenance in 2023 in the amount of $128,350. Next is the approval of a one-year contract with E.J. Prescott for the purchase of miscellaneous water inventory in the amount of $187,065.85. Next is the approval of a one-year contract with Ferguson Waterworks for the purchase of miscellaneous water inventory in the amount of $762,522.78. Next, the approval of a contract with Peters Construction Company for curb and road repairs on Thompson Street in the amount of $194,414.09. Next is the approval of a three-month extension of the contract with Alexander Chemical Corporation for the purchase of 12.5% liquid sodium hypochlorite in the amount of $289,948.75. Next is the approval and extension of the contract with Consumers Concrete for ready-mixed concrete in the amount of $508,650. Next is the adoption of a resolution approving Contract 23-5087 with the Michigan Department of Transportation, hot mix asphalt, cold milling, resurfacing, and pedestrian improvements on Howard Street for the local share amount of $100,500. Next is the approval of budget amendments and acceptance of informational reporting on capital project carryforwards and grant acceptances. Next is the approval of an ARPA State and Local Fiscal Relief Funds Grant in the amount of $122,756 to the Boys and Girls Club of Kalamazoo for implementation of the Bridging Opportunities Program in 2023 and 2024. Next is the approval of a request from the Kalamazoo Country Club for a permit to publicly display fireworks at 1609 White's Road on Sunday, July 2. Next is the approval of a request from the Kalamazoo Growlers to publicly display fireworks at Homer Stryker Field on May 20, June 2, June 9, June 23, July 1, July 4, July 28, August 4, and August 11, 2023. Next, the approval of the Mayor's appointments and reappointments to the Downtown Development Authority and Downtown Economic Growth Authority Boards. The reappointment of Jeff Brenneman for a term expiring on March 31, 2026. The appointment of Kurt Artema for a term expiring on March 31, 2027. And the appointment of Clarence Lloyd for a term expiring on March 31, 2027. Next, the approval of the following appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions. The appointment of Isabella Bales to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a term expiring on January 1, 2026. And then the following appointments, or reappointments, to the Shared Prosperity Kalamazoo Organizing Committee, all with a term expiring on March 31, 2026, except for one, which, for Don Cooney expires on March 31, 2025. And then the following, Ben Damerow, Patrice Griffin, Brenda Hughes, Carol McGlynn, and Dr. John Oliver, all for terms expiring on March 31. I'll need to go through them, I'm sorry. Besides Don, we have Ben Damerow with a term expiry on March 31, 2026, Patrice Griffin with a March 31, 2026 expiration date, Brenda Hughes on March 31, 20- Brenda Hughes on March thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, Carol McGlynn, March thirty-one, twenty twenty-six, and Dr. John Oliver on March thirty-one, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Manager Wismo. So Commissioners, the requested action is a motion to approve Items One through thirteen and authorize the city manager to sign all related documents on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hess, supported by Commissioner Hoffman. Clerk Borning, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Juarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Cradle.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners. The items on the consent agenda are approved. Now we are on to the regular agenda, Manager Wismo.
Item H one is adoption of a resolution adopting a project plan for water system improvements and designating James J. Baker, P.E., as the authorized project representative. And, uh-
C. Director Baker is here, yeah?
Yes, we have Mr. James J. Baker here before us to give a presentation on this.
Welcome, Mr. Baker. Nice to have you here.
Thank you, Your Honor, City Commissioners, uh, City Manager. We have a presentation tonight to go through and explain our, uh, twenty twenty-four drinking water state revolving fund, uh, project plan that we're, uh, submitting here. It's a few housekeeping items. I wanted to draw your attention to the white table over here. We have a sign-in sheet on that table, so, uh, anybody who's interested to write their name down indicating that they were in attendance of, uh, the public meeting for this purpose can do so on that piece of paper there. Uh, so just kind of getting right into this here, uh, we've got a brief agenda that we wanted to focus on, discuss the project scope, the work we're going to be doing, uh, project justification and alternatives, uh, why we're choosing the methods that we're choosing, and what, uh, some other things we looked at, project costs and funding, how much this project costs, and what are the funding mechanisms for it, the project schedule specific to work that we plan to do in twenty twenty-four and twenty-five, and then what those construction impacts would be for, uh, a typical homeowner or resident, uh, that is experiencing that. So getting right into the project scope, uh, we're looking for our twenty twenty-four plan to begin lead service line replacements in a project area that we're roughly defining as Edison neighborhood. This project is larger than the actual Edison neighborhood as shown. It's, uh, it's just our project, uh, description in terms of, of neighborhood category. Uh, there's going to be a pretty significant amount of work with that. We're looking at, uh, two thousand five hundred lead service line replacements within that Edison project area. We're also looking at doing some, uh, cast iron water main rehabilitation by lining. This is a relatively new, uh, type of project for us in terms of actually going through areas of water main and lining those pipes, uh, versus replacing them. The project plan also details some future work areas, and really kind of outlines all of our outstanding lead service work in the city through twenty twenty-eight, including, uh, the Millwood neighborhood, Southwestage neighborhood, Vine neighborhood, Oakwood neighborhood, Westonage Hill, Windchill neighborhood, and Stewart. So here's a map, just kind of shows you those neighborhood areas that I talked about. The red polygon that you have there in front of you is a, what we're referring to is the Edison project area that is larger than the Edison neighborhood, um, and that spans all the way into, uh, Kalamazoo Township as well. It goes all the way to Sprinkle Road there on the east, so that covers areas that are outside of the city as well as areas inside the city. Um, and then as you kind of go around, we've got, uh, some other project areas defined, uh, with years going out into the future all the way out through twenty twenty-eight. In terms of cast iron pipe lining, um, again, this is a relatively new, uh, work scope for us. Uh, we're proposing to line approximately ten thousand feet of pipe. We're, uh, got a project area defined up here in the Knollwood, uh, area, so the, the pipe is gonna remain in the ground, uh, but we're gonna line it to renew it and, uh, extend its service life. I was talking about project justification. Why are we doing this work? You know, primarily, uh, this work focuses on improving water quality. Um, and through that, improvements in water quality, we can improve public health. We know, we're aware of, and we have proven that there's no safe level of lead in any drinking water. So this work is critical and foundational in achieving that goal. Our goal is to remove all lead service lines in Kalamazoo, and we're working towards that goal. Uh, we're also led through the, uh, Michigan Lead and Copper Rule in terms of, uh, specific regulations and directives that we must follow, um, beyond our local, uh, focus here as well. And improved water reliability is another focus area, uh, a project justification area. So when we line those water mains, we can improve the resiliency and reliability of our system by preventing water main breaks. Now, in terms of, um, project costs and funding, uh, the project plan that you have in front of you identifies, uh, project scope of approximately twenty point five million dollars. Uh, that includes that lead service work in twenty twenty-four and the, uh, pipelining in Knollwood. Uh, we don't know the grant amount yet at this time, so in terms of if we had to, uh, finance all that, all that project through the state program, we would be looking at specific cost per user, about three dollars and sixty cents, uh, per quarter to pay for that work. Uh, now, just a quick note that this is not the only project that we have lined up for next year. So this is not a overall rate discussion. Uh, this is just perspective on the twenty point five million dollars of project that we're talking about. What would it take to pay for that, um, with the state drinking water revolving loan program? Uh, it would be about three dollars and sixty cents per quarter, per, per billion address. Project schedule for twenty twenty-four, uh, we would anticipate in the spring to get bids out. Uh, we'd then have, uh, that information back and make a, uh, a, a project, uh, award recommendation to City Commission in the fall, um, and then close out, uh, with the state, anticipating construction to start in the fall of twenty twenty-four. That construction would then span the entire, uh, year of twenty twenty-five and conclude in December of twenty twenty-five. So we're calling it a twenty twenty-four project, um, but it would really only just start in twenty twenty-four, and then it would carry on all the way through twenty twenty-five and, as proposed, end around December of twenty twenty-five. Some impacts, um, when that lead service line replacement is happening in the home, uh, we would send a letter out from the city to everybody in that project area identifying who the contractor is and letting folks know that the contractor is going to be reaching out to families and homes to make appointments. Uh, this work is all done by appointment. We have to be in the home. There has to be an adult or somebody over eighteen years of age in the home with us when we're doing that work. Uh, that work could take up to eight hours. Uh, during that time period, you would have no water in the home. And then we're required, once we start a job at a home, we have to have that work completed within twenty-four hours. That's in the Michigan Lead and Copper Program. Uh, we'll also be giving you an NSF certified filter to use before, during, and then up to forty-five days after we complete, uh, this lead service line work. And the reason for that is, when we go in and remove the lead service line, connect a new copper line to the home, that's a point of disruption, and that can cause particulate lead to get dislodged from the pipes and to, um, make its way through. So, uh, we want to make sure that your family's protected and that you continue to use that filter, even though you had your lead service line replaced, there could be particulate that's still moving through the plumbing system. Some impacts for the cast iron pipe, um, lining, uh, it's less impactful than cast iron pipe replacement, so we don't have to dig up the entire street. Uh, there will be some spot excavations where we actually have to dig up and expose, um, some ed nodes of that pipe. We would, uh, hose over everybody, so to speak. There'd be a temporary line that runs above ground that provides water to all the addresses. And then we would have coordinated fire protection with hydrants that are adjacent to that project area. The pipe is then lined, and then there's a robot that goes inside, uh, that pipe and then reinstates, uh, cuts out little holes where each service is at, and then cuts out holes where there's T's, connections, valves, and hydrants, and that sort of thing. Uh, so this is a, a, a great program that's less impactful. We don't have to dig up the entire street, and then we can add fifty to seventy-five years of life back to that water main and ensure reliability for years to come. During that work, there will be intermittent time periods where there's pressure loss or dropout, and, um, anytime that occurs, there would be a boil of water advisory. And again, far less impactful than, uh, open cut method where we replace all the main. So that pretty much concludes, uh, my discussion. Take any questions anybody may have.
Thank you very much, Director Baker. Questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Cradle.
Evening, Director Baker. I saw the numbers, and you mentioned it as well, twenty-five hundred in twenty twenty-four. That's significant. I, if I'm not mistaken, I think, um, I mean, typically the goal's been around five hundred, and, and your team's far exceeded that every single year. We've had some years that have been upwards of eight hundred plus lead service line replacements. Just kind of curious about that capacity, and, and that seems extraordinarily, uh, ambitious. And, uh, I just kind of curious about how it came to that number and why that many in one year, and, and go for it, yeah, that sounds great, but I just am curious about the rationale behind that.
Yeah, thanks, that's a, that's a great question. So just to clarify, um, it's a twenty twenty-four project. It will start in October twenty twenty-four, but most of that twenty-five hundred replacements would occur in twenty twenty-five. So that project's gonna kind of straddle calendar year, so to speak. Um, so the majority of your twenty-five hundred replacements would actually occur in twenty twenty-five. Uh, that being said, that is a lot for one project. And, uh, you know, we're embarking this year, um, on a similar track in North Kalamazoo where we're working, um, it will be awarding late this year again, probably in October, and we're gonna have a large sum, probably six or eight hundred lines that we're working through, although most of those will show, um, towards the, the back half of the, the next year. Um, you know, we've gone through a few iterations of project scope and delivery in terms of how we look at these project areas, how we define them, and how we award that work. Um, and we've found success, um, or, or greater success in larger project areas. So if we can define a large neighborhood and get the contractors here, get the materials here, that's been a, a problem as of late, uh, material procurement. But if we can get kind of all that heavy lifting done up front and then award the work, then the work can go on and progress. And so we're finding that, um, through project delivery methods, we can be more successful with larger project scopes.
Another question I had for you is, uh, for the Knollwood cast iron, uh, pipelining project as well. How did, how, how, uh, was that particular project decided? You know, how, how to prioritize that particular, like, pipelining versus other areas? And, uh, yeah, if you could just speak a little bit to that.
Yeah, certainly, another great question. So, uh, again, this is a relatively new process for us. Uh, we've done some work in the city. We just did Stockbridge, uh, there was a bridge on Stockbridge Street that we did this process with it. So we've been kind of following this process for a number of years now, and we're ready to kind of really, um, execute it in, in a large, in grand scale. There, right now, if you look at City Kalamazoo bid opportunities, we're bidding out a large, uh, pipelining project in Knollwood that's going to be awarded this year and executed this year as well. So it's not on the screen, we're not talking about it, um, because we're using a, a different funding mechanism for that. So we're kind of stepping into this, uh, methodology to do this work. So, you know, what areas would allow for this work versus main replacement? Uh, really, we're looking at, um, areas where we don't plan to do the street, so there's not that, that benefit of the coordination of doing the street. Uh, we're also looking at size. So if the main that's there, um, there's no change in size, there's no need to go to a bigger size. Uh, we're also looking at break history and occurrence, and, you know, pipe material as well to say that, you know, there's a need, but the pipe is still good enough to go a little bit longer. This is gonna create kind of a pipe in a pipe, and so it's kind of a unique scenario of, um, it's a street that we don't necessarily see as a full reconstruct. So Kalamazoo Avenue is not a good example because that is going to be a full reconstruct. We're happy with the pipe size in terms of fire flow and growth and everything else. Again, Kalamazoo Ave not a good example because we're going to be increasing the pipe size in Kalamazoo Ave. And then the, we want to make sure that the pipe, um, structurally can withstand, you know, into the future. So we're really kind of targeting a pipe that was, you know, laid in the, you know, late forties, early fifties, and that, um, you know, Knollwood kind of fits that bill, and, and it has the break history as well.
Does the, the pipelining, does that tend to be, uh, in areas where there's like aesthetic issues? I can't remember if I remember seeing that in the packet or whatever, but is that kind of a natural thing that improves condition as well by doing that? With sometimes the discoloration you see that doesn't impact the health or safety per se, but might visibly not be super appealing looking?
Yeah, there, there can be aesthetic impacts as well, or aesthetic benefits. So some of the pipe, uh, projects where we're proposing, uh, in, in Knollwood, that could have an occurrence we call tuberculosis, where the inside of that cast iron pipe has, you know, rust or scale that's kind of growing inside the pipe. So, um, this pipelining work, the first step is that those lines are going to get pigged, so they get cleaned and pigged out, and then the pipeliner goes in there. And when the pipeliner's in the pipe, it's not on the inside, it's not, um, cast iron anymore. It's a, you know, essentially a plastic material at, at that point. So the pipe itself is not going to contribute to iron or rust issues, uh, in that pipe. Now, it's still, the source water's still maybe high in iron, but the pipe corrosion is not going to be a contributing factor to aesthetic water quality issues once lined.
Commissioner Hess.
Yeah, thank you for this presentation. And, uh, so you're talking about, um, that there will be intermittent pressure loss and, and so on. And, uh, can you talk a little bit about how you're going to communicate with those homes and those neighbors, and what's the process so that everyone will know that this is going on and they might experience some disruptions?
Yeah, great question. So, um, the notification's gonna be boots on the ground. It's gonna be specific to street addresses. It's not necessarily going to be something that you're gonna read about in Sunday paper weeks ahead of the event. It's gonna be, uh, we call them red tags. There's gonna be a tag on your door that's bright and red, and it's, it'll say notice and attention. It's bilingual in two languages. And so it, you know, really focuses to let folks know that you're gonna have water shut off or pressure loss, and you're under a boil of water advisory. Uh, under a boil of water advisory, we'll tag and tape, uh, notice to the door, all doors to the building, front door, back door, side door, up door, down door. We tape everything, so, uh, you'll be very well aware. Um, and we've also used some, um, social media platforms as well. Every single boil of water advisory that we issue is on our website. Um, so you, at any time, you can go to boil of water, City Kalamazoo Boil of Water, and see all active boil waters, whether that's one house or a hundred houses. It's, it's on our website as well.
That's so wonderful, thank you. And speaking of communication with folks, this doesn't have anything to do with your presentation, but I was gonna say something during comments, but I'd like it to come from you, the flushing of the hydrants. Can you just quickly go through that and let the folks know, uh, what's gonna go on with the hydrant flushing throughout Kalamazoo?
Yeah, certainly, that's something we do twice a year. Um, it's routine maintenance. It helps scour the lines out, get any iron or, um, deposition that's in the lines. It gets that material out. Um, it's also a way to kind of exercise the system. Uh, we utilize the, the full hydraulic capacity of our entire system, so it's a good, uh, kind of, uh, check the system as well to see how everything's working. Um, tonight, we're gonna be in the, the great Vine neighborhood, so come out, um, and join us. And, uh, you know, we'll be out there doing, doing that great work. Uh, we started Sunday night, and we, uh, in the view from the curb, it shows dates of where we're at all throughout the city and the townships as well. We go, you know, around the, the, the full area, uh, a full system area. But during, when we're doing this work, uh, you may wake up in the morning and find your water may be slightly discolored, and we would advise that, you know, you run it for a full five to six minutes, the cold water, and to see if that cleared it out. Uh, it could be a very likely occurrence that in the middle of the night, we were flushing, and, you know, we pulled some, uh, discolored water past where your service line was, and that's it. So if, just flush that through, and, and that should clear.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you very much, Director Baker.
Thank you.
Now is the opportunity for anyone in the audience who has comments, decided to come forward and make, to talk specifically about this topic. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment? See no comments or questions? The recommended action, Commissioner, is a motion to adopt the resolution. Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion made by Commissioner Juarez.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Pradel. Any discussion, Commissioners? Commissioner Pradel?
Yeah, just applaud the Public Services, just the progress and aggressiveness they've been tackling the lead service line replacement program. It's incredible. And just recently, at our, on the street I live on, they started communication to kind of start identifying whether there's lead service lines within the house, the homes, and just in terms of like the communication, the items left at the door, the friendliness of the staff to come in and just quickly hop into your house, check to see what kind of service line you have inside. I just want to applaud your team for just their professionalism, their great work. I can't imagine the diligence that it requires to do that, because you imagine every single household, you have to treat on an individual basis to work with them, both to identify what kind of line that they're dealing with, but also when it comes time to do the lead service line, I would imagine with communication in that home as well. So thank you for your and your team as well. I did want to mention that the reason I asked the question about Knollwood and just like how that one is identified is that, I know, I'm just speaking on behalf of like residents that I've heard from. You know, I hear overwhelmingly disproportionately from residents of Millwood and Oakwood particularly about the aesthetics of their water. And, you know, I know that you mentioned, you know, the upcoming linings for Millwood Neighborhood as well, but I can't stress the importance of that, that people just know that we've got our foot, our hand on that pulse, and recognize that that is a concern for families and a quality of life thing for families in those neighborhoods. And it certainly impacts people's decisions to stay, people's decisions to live in the neighborhood. And particularly, like with a young family myself in Millwood, I know disproportionately over the last 10 years that we've been there, we've seen such a big tide change of people who were aging out of their homes and young families coming into our neighborhood. And, you know, you see pictures of families posting pictures of their bathtub with, you know, discoloration in it. And I know that we've done a great job of educating people about that being aesthetics and everything, but you can understand where parents feel that way. And I just hope we keep our foot on the gas in terms of trying to make sure that we address and listen to the residents of Millwood and Oakwood especially, because, you know, for every, maybe, you know, 25 people I've heard from related to that kind of like water quality issue, I would say 24 of them probably come from Millwood or Oakwood. So just wanted to make sure to lift that up for those residents as well.
Very important, Commissioner Pradel. Thanks for mentioning that. Obviously, that is not specifically a part of this plan, but I think it is the case that all of us hear that. And when we talk about water rates, that's the first thing we hear is, you know, what's going on with our water? I know we have a very large groundwater well-based system, and there is iron in it, but we've had some conversations, multiple conversations even recently, Director Baker, talking about what can we do about that. And I think unfortunately, it is expensive and incremental, but I know that's top of mind for you when you're thinking about the work you're doing. So that's very important. Any other discussion on this topic? Clerk Boyle, please call a roll.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Juarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, the resolution is adopted. Next is reports and legislation. Manager Whitman, do you have a report?
Yeah, Your Honor. It's actually a sad moment, but I think we need to really pay attention. Tomorrow marks the 12 years since the tragic death of Eric Zapata in the line of duty. And so I've asked Chief Boyson to come forward to say a few words. And Chief?
Welcome, Chief. Good to have you here.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, city leadership. Yes, tomorrow, April 18th, sadly marks the 12-year anniversary of PSO Eric Zapata's line of duty death. PSO Zapata made the ultimate sacrifice while rushing to reports of gunfire to assist fellow officers and to protect this community. And I was honored to serve with PSO Zapata, just as I am honored to serve with the men and women of public safety who continue to answer the call for service, who continue to put their lives on the line to protect the citizens of this community. And so he's an example. PSO Zapata is an example to all of us. And we will always remember the sacrifice and service that he gave to this community. And I just ask, as we approach this date and move forward, that you keep PSO Zapata, his family and his KDPS family in your thoughts and prayers as we go through this time together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Boyson. Anything else, Manager Whitman?
Nothing, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Now we're onto new business. So on our new business this evening, we have a proposal to approve an employment agreement with Mr. Aaron Leal for the position of city attorney. So that's in front of us this evening. I just want to remind the Commission that this is our second time we've done this in the last number of months, in terms of getting to this, close to this place anyway, and went through an extensive process of looking for resumes and evaluating applications and interviewing here, obviously. And I am comfortable that we have selected someone who brings a lot to the table, very, I would say, a very inspiring life history, and a detailed knowledge of municipal legal work. I do want to thank Director Duzick, our HR Director here, for taking us through this process here the second time around, and also recognize that it was Commissioner Decker and Commissioner Pradel and I who you kind of authorized to be on a subcommittee to help us take us through this. Commissioner Decker, obviously, is not here this evening, but her message to me was, go ahead, I trust you. I don't need to be here this evening. So that all said, we now have an employment agreement, which is something that we have with our appointees in particular, because the appointees work directly for the city commission, and that's on our agenda for this evening. Any questions from Commission relative to the employment contract? Commissioner Pradel, anything in particular you'd like to say about the process or?
You know, I think if Mr. Leal's approach to this is any indication of how he's going to serve the city, I think I would say he's going to serve us well. You know, I think it's prudent of a person who's taken a position to negotiate for their benefit. He, you know, is going to be a very talented person, and we've been through this process twice. So I think, you know, you'll see some evidence in this where we've kind of sweetened the pot in terms of what we were initially offering. Not significantly, but things like slightly higher pay, moving stipend, vehicle allowance, and just an annual contribution to retirement as well. And so I think, you know, they seem fair, and I think it's definitely worth doing to attract and retain this individual. So I think, yeah, I was pleased to see what was negotiated.
Appreciate that, Commissioner Pradel. Any other questions from anyone? No, all right. So I need a motion to approve the employment agreement with Aaron Leal for the position of city attorney.
I'll move that.
Motion made by Commissioner Hess.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Juarez. Any other discussion, team?
Mayor.
All right, see none. I'm, Commissioner Hess, I'm sorry.
Now, I just, so I want to thank the subcommittee who actually worked on this and who took the time away and really had the city and the client, as the client and focus of the work. So thanks to you who did that work. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hess. Clerk Boyle?
Do we want public comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. There we go. Not only want them, but we need to provide an opportunity for those. Anyone here in the chambers who would like to comment on this item? See none? Clerk Boyle, please call a roll.
Commissioner Juarez.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Thank you very much. The employment agreement is approved. And I know that there will be a text going out probably momentarily about that. And thank you so much. And we are, we're looking forward to, probably it's going to be a late June start date. I think he was committed to providing his current employer 60 days' notice, which I think is a fair thing to do. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that our current city attorney is going to be staying around. Is that correct? I hate to put you on the spot here.
Let me get back to you on that.
Get back to me on that. Okay, fine. It's for a different face. I didn't know for sure. All right. Well, thank you, Attorney Robinson, for at least immediately not saying no right off the bat. Next on our agenda is Commissioner comments, since there's someone who'd like to start us off this evening. Commissioner Juarez?
Yeah, so I just wanted to take time to shine light on some of the situations that's been happening in our community. First of all, you guys heard with the recent overdoses that have been happening. Somewhere in the ballpark of seven people died, two, I think in out, like portage, and about five here in Kalamazoo. The devastation that drugs have on our community. And so I just want to shine light on that because that's super important. There's a lot of families that are hurting right now, a lot of people who've been impacted by that, people I know who are coming out of comas. It's just difficult, right? And so I just want us to be able to shine light on that and pray, and continue to keep our prayers for the families. And that's a, that's a difficult thing to go through as a city. And it's sad, it's difficult, and just continue to keep praying for our city, our police department, to figure that stuff out, right? Their countless hours working around the clock trying to figure that stuff out, right? At the same time, we're a city in between two major cities, Detroit and Chicago, and we have a pipeline that goes right through it. So, you know, we gotta continue to work tirelessly and hard to keep our communities safe. And the other thing is the gun violence, right? I mean, we just had a couple murders a week ago or so. We had our first murder of the year. It's not, it's one of those things that is kind of hard to talk about because it's like, oh, we just had our first murder of the year. We're doing a great job. But we shouldn't even have that, like that conversation. I pray and hope to God that one day we can be in a position to not even be praising the fact that, oh, we just had our first murder of the year, right? Because it's one of those things where it's like gun violence is so horrendous in our country right now. And it just, you know, it's one of those things that's sweeping through our nation, our community. Me and my wife were up the other night, and there's like eight or nine shots rang off a block away from my house. And it's just one of those things where, you know, I pray for our community constantly. And we gotta keep praying for our community to continue to stay safe and to be able, like, it's hard for me to let my kids go outside and play, right? I live right on Washington in between March and James, and there's a lot of gun violence there. But, I mean, we can be better, right? We can be better.
Thank you, Commissioner Juarez. Other comments from Commissioner, Vice Mayor Cooney?
So, thank you, Commissioner Juarez, for putting that out there, because these are issues. First of all, I want to thank the state legislature for taking some significant steps to move into the area of, and at least putting some kind of a break on the gun violence that we're seeing throughout the state, throughout our country. And I want to, I'm glad Mr. Sweeney came up tonight and commended our public safety officers for the excellent work that they're doing. They are working as hard as they can and are doing a wonderful job in prevention. We have to look at, why is it that so many people end up with substance abuse? Why is it that so many people are picking up guns? I mean, I think it's something deep in our society, and we can do better. I think the steps that the state legislature was taking are good steps, but we got a lot more. We got to give people hope. We got to give them some kind of a pathway to success. We got to show that people are valued and cared about. And these are things that we have to keep working on, because by the time it gets to public safety to stop it, there's a lot of other things that have happened before that. And those are the things that we got to really work on, not just in this community, but in this nation.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Hess?
Yes, agreed. Commissioner Juarez and Vice Mayor Cooney, thank you so much. I was going to talk about the increased activity and the overdoses and the shootings that have happened in the last few weeks. I want to give my gratitude to public safety for their quick response and for being there and getting the word out to the community about the dangers of the fentanyl that's happening here in our community. Chief Boyson, please let your team know of our gratitude and our support. We are above, you have gone above and beyond the call. I would like for us, Chef Shannon Mandu had come with Canadiana Fest information, and it's just, it is another way for one person who is doing, doing literally community here in Kalamazoo. She saw an opportunity, apparently there are many, many, many Canadian nationals that live in Kalamazoo or in the greater Kalamazoo area. What a wonderful way to celebrate them. I would like for us as a commission to talk publicly about, maybe in a committee of the whole, or just to be able to talk about how we might want to be involved in such a fest, and how, what it might mean for us to have a sister city. And I don't know what that means. And I'd like to learn more maybe from City Manager or the mayor about that. But it would be a great opportunity for Kalamazoo to come together around a festival and something that's going to celebrate culture here in Today, in, from the office, from our office of the city of diversity, equity, inclusion, from Laotuni wrote, word of the week is health equity. What is health equity? It means that everyone has a fair and just opportunity to be as healthy as possible. This requires removing obstacles to health, such as poverty, discrimination, and their consequences, including powerlessness and lack of access to good jobs with fair pay, quality education and housing, safe environments, and healthcare. Not a lot different than what you were talking about, Vice Mayor. But on Saturday, Commissioner Pradel and Commissioner Hoffman and Mayor Anderson and I were blessed, literally blessed, to be at the ribbon cutting for the Helping Hands, the new Helping Hands free health clinic on Rose Street. And that is creating health equity. There hasn't been a free clinic in the town since, for about a decade. And, you know, even Director Baker spoke about the public health effect of what they're doing with replacing these lines and with lining the pipes around Kalamazoo. So there's health effects to everything, but we do have a way now for people in Kalamazoo to seek care and good healthcare, thanks to Officer Glenn Hawkins and his efforts with his family to make this happen. Again, Again, one family doing community for community, it's a verb, it's an action word. It's one takes one person with one idea, and there's a way to do it here in Kalamazoo. And that's what makes me happy about living in Kalamazoo, because there's always a way. I believe that we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hess. Commissioner Peddell?
Thanks, Mayor. I wanted to take a minute just to talk about something that's maybe beyond Kalamazoo, but has an impact here. I've been particularly really touched and moved by Senator Fetterman from Pennsylvania. He was voluntarily hospitalized for depression, had a stroke last year during his election race, a highly competitive one in Pennsylvania. And, you know, just the, the message that he, he has taken in being very outward and vocal and candid and honest about what he's going through and having those difficult conversations and talking about it, to understand that it's okay to not be okay. And just a reminder to people, there is, there is no doubt in my mind that, that his outward facing as an elected official at the highest level and just making that a priority to make sure that he's, he's sharing his experience with the world, his saving lives and improving lives with people, you know, around the country and the world, but also here in the community. And we need more of that. We need people in order to, I guess, thwart the misconceptions about mental health and the impacts mental health has on so many of the issues that we're facing as a community. We need more people like Senator Fetterman to come forward and step forward and speak truth to that. Also wanted to just think of everybody involved with recent violence in our community, everyone from loved ones involved, but also, you know, again, our officers who are the first to respond and, and first responders. I, I too want to just make sure to thank, I think, take, take the moment to thank the legislature and the governor for being willing to move the needle on gun violence and take steps that are, are perfectly reasonable and should have been done a long time ago. Also want to make sure to formally welcome City Attorney Liel to the city of Kalamazoo. Something that particularly struck me during his interview is I loved how he spoke about the pride he takes when he's driving around or involved in the communities he's involved in, and he sees, you know, the contracts alive that he helped write. And I think he's going to take a lot of pride in the city of Kalamazoo because of all the great things happening here. I'm sure as City Attorney Robinson can attest, there's never a dull moment here. Also wanted to make sure to lift out of the consent agenda, tonight we approved two years of funding for the Bridges Opportunities Program with Boys and Girls Club. That's huge in partnership with Boys and Girls Club and Public Safety and Juvenile Home and, and our courts. That's, that's a very powerful program, and we heard from KDPS speak to that a couple committee of the whole meetings ago, but thank you for bringing that forward and making sure that that has adequate funding for the next year. And then lastly, I just wanted to give Director Baker another shout out as well. You know, tonight we, we talked about being a Tree City USA and celebrating Arbor Day, but the city has really invested heavily in our, our urban forestry over the last, say, three to, three to four, five years, something like that, where, you know, each year we've been planting three to, I guess maybe three to 500, is that a safe estimate of trees around our community? And you're starting to see those pop up all along our streetscapes, and it's having a huge impact on our community. And the thing I love about that is that I know that that's going to be an action that we're taking that will probably outlive my life here on earth, because, you know, they'll still be here making our community a better place even after we're long and gone. So anyway, so thank you for that work, and I, I hope we continue to be aggressive in terms of, of doing that in our community. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Peddell. So, hey, first of all here, just before my comments, I just wanted to let my seatmates know up here that I did test before I came to the meeting tonight, because I got this little cough going on. And these days, since the pandemic started, if you're coughing or hacking a little bit, you're, I think, perceived as a pariah, and you feel like it. You feel like you shouldn't be there. And so I, I tested, but also I just wanted to say it is, continues to make, help me feel empathic with our friend up here, Commissioner Hoffman, who's been off and on dealing with, with a chronic sort of a cough situation, and how uncomfortable that is when you're in a public space, and you, you feel like people are thinking you shouldn't be here. And that's, so, thank you for still showing up and doing this work, but I know there's that little, there's that burden, maybe a bit of embarrassment, self-consciousness about that, so, anyway, I'm recognizing that. And so, that's that. I wanted to, I've got sort of a variety of things here. I want to recognize that Wes Freeman passed away just recently. Most of you will not remember Wes Freeman, but he was county administrator for a long time, solid person at the county. And actually, when he retired from the county, he worked at the Kalamazoo Community Foundation for quite a while. Just one of those longtime kind of solid, solid people who cared about the city and spent their work lives, you know, just trying to be, doing the most responsible thing they could just to move the ball forward and make sure Kalamazoo was working. And I'm sorry to see that, that, that he had passed away. In addition, some of the things that we talked about, you know, how does a community work? You know, expanding beyond, you know, yes, Wes worked at the county, but we've had so many opportunities day in and day out just to see how community functions. And whether you're talking about events like the ribbon cutting for Helping Hands. One of our very own public safety officers who's keeping his job, who really saw a need, talked to his mom, talked her into coming back out of retirement to help run this clinic, and said, you know, there's a space, not only am I going to just have a good idea, I'm not going to sit around and think, well, there's a good idea, someone else should do it. I'm going to spend a boatload of time trying to figure out how I'm going to fund this, who's going to do it, and bring it to fruition. And then we were at the ribbon cutting for Sagatuck Brewery. And there's another, this is entrepreneurial, for-profit activity, but we have it right in the heart of our downtown, kind of an empty place that had been sitting there for a little while, and Sagatuck Brewery folks taking a risk, moving in there. Hopefully there'll be another kind of a vibrant community gathering place. And that was something to get to participate in that. I was out at Kalamazoo Valley Community College today. April, I think, is community college month. And just want to remind us, we have a great community college. And here in Kalamazoo, Dr. Marshall Washington presented on what they're up to, and it just made me proud to sit there as an alumni, actually, from Kalamazoo Valley Community College, in, in all the work they're doing and how they're trying to continually adjust what they provide in terms of the things that we want. For example, coming over to NACD and doing trains over there, that kind of community outreach kind of work, changing programs. And there are people that come here from around the world to participate in their wind turbine technician training program, as a matter of fact. So, great, great partner here. On and on, that, that is going on all the time. We have entrepreneurs, we have people in nonprofits, we have our, our public partners doing this work of, of making community happen. And another one, which I, I just mentioned to, to manage risk from here, that Commissioner Hess and Vice Mayor Cooney, we were at a presentation over at Southwest Michigan First, which was quite an optimistic presentation, I thought. And there, there has been a lot of thinking there and reinventing, I would say, at Southwest Michigan First in terms of how are we going to make sure that people, all people, can prosper in this community that we live in? And an expansion of their efforts related to talking about how they need to be thinking about and happening with housing and with daycare, those things that we're talking about. And so I thought, you know, it was great to be there, and that is a refresh, and I think they're talking about making sure their work is being viewed through the DEI lens, being very conscious of that and all the things they're doing. So I would suggest for something us to contemplate, and I just mentioned this to the manager, you may remember some years ago, we severed our relationship with Southwest Michigan First. We weren't just a participating member any longer. And I think it's time for us to think again about, this is time to get on, back on board there. That's certainly the economic development, we want people to have good jobs and opportunities, all that sort of thing, and, and we want to be part of the good, good work. We've certainly mentioned it several times up here, and, and our, our, just our heartfelt sympathies go out from this commission for people who have passed away in this community in this very, very intense last few days and last couple of weeks, related to gun violence and overdose deaths, overdose deaths here in Kalamazoo. I mean, it's shocking. And so our heartfelt sympathies go out to, to all families and friends who are touched by that. But just this evening, I want to specifically recognize, you know, particularly as we're coming up on this anniversary, I guess, here, our own department, County Department of Public Safety. And I guess a little bit of this gets wrapped in. I, I used to be a certified EMT and spent a lot of time in an ambulance, and I can tell you that, it's been years and years and years since I've done that, to this day, I can remember as if it were yesterday, some of the events that I visited when people were in great distress or were no longer alive. And that, that is just memories you do not forget. And starting, I think, on Thursday evening, at least I think one of the early overdose events happened just around the corner from me on Harley Street, I believe that's what that was. And subsequent to that, within 45 minutes, there was another call for, from OD down on Douglas. And I was out and about and kind of watching, watching the ambulance and all our public safety officers that were showing up, and then that just continued and continued and continued. And so this is a group of people that are rushing into these traumatic events and trying to save lives and being the best they can be, but also dealing with that human trauma, that they are, they're distanced from it, they're there in a professional capacity, but, but they are there as part of that, while most of us aren't. And those perhaps will be memories that, that members of the County Department of Public Safety will always have with them. We've had some very young people who had very potential for hopeful lives in front of them who lost their lives, very unfortunately. And maybe the first person there to that vehicle or to that house or wherever that was, that was responding right there at that moment, that was somebody who was rushing from County Department of Public Safety. So I just want to recognize that team. Thank you, chief, that you're here. Please make sure that we honor and respect and support your team as they do this important work and hope that we have the capacity for people to, to take care of themselves. The last thing we want to do is for someone to have to, to get hardened by the work, to become jaded by the work, to, to feel frustrated, depressed about the work. It is so, so important, and we really, I know all of us, really, really appreciate your efforts. Just the last thing about, we've been talking about gun violence now and treating it as a public health kind of event and something we need to deal with, and I guess I will just say something here for what it's worth, and that is that one of the pieces of work that we do, which public safety is very involved with here, is that identifying individuals who have had some interactions with public safety, have had some, you know, troubling interactions in the community, and really trying to focus on making sure that we're intervening and trying to avoid this group violence and, and that kind of thing that's going on. That, that was not what was going on with our recent fatalities here. There was no way in particular necessarily to get in front of that. And, but, absent public safety, you know, there is a way for all of us in the community and as individuals to say, okay, if we're thinking about this as a public safety issue, what can I do personally? How do some of these happen? What are some of the situations? Well, I'll suggest something very clearly how you could make a big difference for someone you know, your family. And let's say that you want to go out on a Saturday night, and you want to have a good time. And you want to have a couple of drinks with your friends, and you want to do some dancing, you want to do a little partying, you, you want to spend some time having a great evening. And maybe as the evening goes on, emotions are high, maybe you had one too many, maybe the fun turns to anger, and at the end of the evening, someone has lost their life over some fight, which you look back at, you say, was this, was this fight a sufficient seriousness that someone should lose their, their life over it? No, but one event leads to another, and the next thing you know. Well, one thing that could really keep that from happening, if you think that that's the kind of evening you're going to have, hey, leave that gun home. You have a, do you have a problem with leaving it home in a safe way? Well, hey, let's talk about having gun safes. You know, if that's the, the kind of evening you're heading into, leave the weapon behind. That's the last quick decision you want to make that is not only going to affect the life of someone you might be shooting at, but your life and the life of your families and your children. You don't want to have that opportunity to make a bad decision there in that moment, clodded by whatever else, emotions, late, late at night, early in the morning. So I'm hoping that for each other in Kalamazoo, we can be that voice saying, hey, let's, let's go out and have a couple of drinks and do some dancing tonight, whatever it is, listen to good music. Let's not have this evening end in a way that we're all going to regret for the rest of our lives when we go to these kinds of things. That's a simple, simple action. That's a, a public health kind of action. That's an avoid something kind of action. And I'm hoping that we can support each other across the board, you know, to make wise choices and hopefully avoid those kind of situations. I really appreciate serving with everybody here. The team means a lot to me. I love you, Kalamazoo. We're adjourned.